Hi there, Mr. Chair.
You like that? Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna try some of the choices, yeah. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, February 24th, 2014, being seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we'd start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and after the pledge, please remain standing.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an announcement from the Governor. Please be advised that William Francis Galvin has ordered that the -- Acting Governor William Francis Galvin has ordered that the United States flag and the Commonwealth flag be lowered to half-staff at all state buildings from sunrise until sunset on Wednesday, February 26, 2014, in order of Private Miguel Angel Verdejolapolonico, U.S. Army of PBD, who died February 18, 2014. If you'll join me in a moment, silence, please. Thank you very much. On my glasses. So for tonight, we have the agenda. We're gonna start with mail from Keith. Then we'll have input and updates from the public and board members. We have some departmental requests from the schools and the Council on Aging. At 7:30, we will hear from the Littleton Conservation Trust regarding Long Lake. At 7:50, we have -- we're gonna discuss the Common Foods, also known as Littleton Sub Shop, Pub on the Common. At 8:10, we have Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator for Finance and Budget for four items. At 8:45, we're scheduled for a public hearing for GW Archer, also known as Archer's Mobile. And at nine o'clock, we have the consent agenda and minutes approval. With that, Mr. Bergman.
Mr. Chairman, just one item in the mail packet this weekend. It's a letter that I have submitted to the Legislature's Joint Committee on Housing in support of a home rule petition that their committee is hearing tomorrow morning. And it has to do with our subsidized housing inventory. We're looking to get change in state law that would allow a community to continue to count units on the SHI, the subsidized housing inventory, for as long as the developer has permission to build them. That is not the way the law reads right now. The law gives the developer one year, and with the developer that over a year ago, a year and about two or three days ago, was granted a comprehensive permit for 15 Great Road, those building permits have not been pulled yet. So our, as we had predicted, our subsidized housing inventory temporarily falls below 10% until we -- until the building permits get issued. Just by way of general update, the zoning Board of Appeals next continues its public hearing on the amended plan for 15 Great Road next Monday night, March 3rd. At 7:15, they appear to me to be getting very close to a decision. They had a decision drafting Subcommittee, which has presented its work to the full Board, that I think it's one possible outcome of Monday's meeting. At the least is that the public hearing will close, assuming that a peer review report gets submitted by then. If so, I think it will likely be not long thereafter that a decision will get issued. And we're -- the target date in discussions between the applicant and the ZBA is about August for -- by when he would pull building permits for at least two of the three apartment buildings, which would bring us back to over 10%.
So on this--
But meantime, we're, you know, we're still pursuing the legislative route that we explained to town meeting in November, and we'll keep doing that. We're updating our housing production plan. The consultant is on board and working on the project, so working on that task.
Good. Do we expect a decision tomorrow?
No.
All right. And I know you've gone to these in the past. Are you going to provide testimony or anything?
Yeah, I submitted a letter, and I'll testify as well. I had testified in front of that committee back in October, when a similar bill from the town of Norton was heard. Norton's bill is also being reheard at the hearing tomorrow, so they haven't taken any action on either bill yet, but we'll report what happens.
Okay, great. Thank you. With that, we can move to public input. Is there anyone who wants to be heard tonight? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Henry Crosswell, Mill Lane. I'm trying to -- I'd like to discuss tonight to see if the board has any willingness or interest to discuss with the public the issues that were outlined in a letter that was sent to the board on February 4th regarding the financing of the fire station. There's a dozen people that crafted that letter, very thoughtfully written, and I think the information therein is worthy of discussion. Something that has occurred subsequent to that was news in the paper from Groton just last week, who's going through the same thing, how they're funding, attempting to fund a fire station through inside a levee. And this has caused them some extreme frustration right now, and they're gonna have to, I think, divert that to another kind of funding. So I would like if this board is interested, that I mean, if we could make your agenda, if we could have an airing of our questions, then I'll discuss the options.
I don't think -- I don't think it's appropriate tonight. I appreciate you bringing it up. Last time it was -- last time it was brought up, I said that I was committed to revisiting the issue. I take your question not as a question of my integrity or my ability or my intent to do that, but I will say that Keith and I have discussed it, and it is scheduled for March 10th, that we are gonna revisit the item.
Well, glad to hear that.
Thank you. Is anybody else? Okay. With that, we can go to board member updates. Alex?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing? Wow. Jim?
I had a meeting with LABA, the Littleton Athletic Boosters Association. They get the 14th Annual Tiger Golf Tournament coming up, so details to follow.
I have a couple items. As you can -- as you see, Jenna is not here tonight, and she asked me to read a statement for her, and it is follows: "For the first time, I am unable to attend a Board of Selectmen meeting. I am with my mother in Florida to be with her for her surgery to treat a rare and aggressive form of cancer. Upon my return, I will watch the recording of the meeting and to see what I missed. My apologies, Jenna." So with that, we've -- I believe we've all spoken with Jenna. We wish her the best possible outcome and safe travels. Another thing I'd like to bring up tonight, if you can see, we have -- I have a tablet here. The last time we met, the board discussed going to electronic packets and information and trying to go paperless for these meetings. So on Friday, I thought to myself, well, I have a packet, and it was about 2 o'clock, and I emailed staff and said, hey, let's try to do this for, you know, the meeting in -- first meeting in March. And they scurried and got together a packet for me, and I have it here on the tablet. And hopefully, this is the first step of testing this and seeing if we can go to paperless. So I'd like to thank the staff for the quick response and trying to help the selectmen meet our agenda.
You read the paper agenda, though, Mr. Chair.
I need -- I still need something to check off. And I still have my paper packet here, because I think the biggest hurdle to overcome here is gonna be operator error. So I still need the paperwork, the paper --
Backup?
Yeah, the paper as backup, so.
And we'll be looking at ways to test drive this, and, you know, one of the issues as well is what sort of computer equipment would each of you need to be able to work with that, so. Need not be B-Y-O-T.
Right, right. I thought I was the last to buy a tablet, but I don't know if anybody else has.
I have one.
Yeah, so.
That one has.
It's good beta testing. Okay. So that was a little bit shorter than I expected. At 7:15, we have some school crossing guard and special municipal employees. Item 3A.
Yeah, I don't think we'll have anyone from the school department here tonight, but we did get their request pursuant to -- I should mention that our finance payroll department has been working with various department heads and town council to make sure that we identify all the issues surrounding individuals who hold multiple offices, just to make sure we're all set. And there's one -- there will be subsequent actions that will be brought forward at later dates to follow things up, but the specific request that you have before you tonight is from the school department on the advice of council, asking that you designate the position of school crossing guard as a special municipal employee, essentially to permit the incumbent to -- or to hold multiple offices. And if you know the incumbent, you know that she holds many, many, many--
Multiple offices. So this is for Billy McGovern as right now?
It would apply to anyone with that title.
Oh, it would be anyone without a title, okay. At this point, she's the current office holder. And this is something that is -- what is the law that requires this? Because it's like -- Alex uses the term unintended consequences. This is something to prevent somebody from double dipping?
Well, it's the conflict of interest law, which has restrictions on multiple office holding, and that the restrictions are less if a position is designated as a special municipal employee. You're still not allowed to -- and it basically covers the cases where it's the -- the conflict comes from having multiple official positions, not a conflict that arises from your personal circumstances, that, you know, like your personal business or something. The conflict comes that you have more than one town job, not that what you do privately has impacts what you do publicly.
It's to prevent something else, and this is an unintended consequence, that we get stuck with these people who are trying to do something good and something they've been doing. I know there's other positions here, and it's kind of -- they get kind of stuck in this trap that's here to prevent other things.
And the conflict of interest law does recognize that this sort of thing happens a lot in towns under 10,000. And so you're -- you have, in fact, the boards of selectmen in towns under 10,000 are by statute special municipal employees, whether you want to be or not. Once we reach 10,001, you won't be, but in a federal census, but.
We had discussion about this the last time, I think it was Officer Corey in the Recreation Commission. We talked about making a blanket policy, 'cause, I mean--
Yeah, we talked about that, and then the board rejected that, so we've gone back to one at a time.
You know, maybe something we should at least talk about? I mean, you look at the packet, and there are--
Yeah, the issue that was in front of you at the time was what -- yeah, was whether all town boards should be so designated. We're -- in this case, we're bringing a part-time employee position that would qualify rather than a member of a town board.
Okay. Alex, you look anywhere. Care to say something? You have anything?
Well, yeah. One of the things in this package is it talks about a number of these positions, and mostly to deal with being athletic officials. So we're being asked to vote on one, and I was wondering what, you know, what--
Yeah, we will not have a request to designate the -- it's my understanding, we will not be having a request to designate athletic officials as special municipal employees.
Okay.
But one of the -- but there is a series of exemptions that will be requested once the school department has dealt with each of the employees. There's exemptions that the board of selectmen can grant under the conflict of interest law, and that's sort of the set -- the next set of things that you'll be getting, when the school department's ready to bring those forward.
This is a little bit complex in the various relationships that go back and forth. And I had one comment, because when we do something like that, it's related to the position, such as crossing guard, or if we were considering athletic official, we would be talking about that. But I would like to see -- I mean, this is a great layout of all the things that have to be considered. I'd sort of like to see a discussion of the position and not necessarily the name, in that, you know, we can give examples and stuff like that, but rather than say, you know, this person by name, that person by name, and this person by name, it's, you know, this situation, this set of circumstances. And then we more readily focus on the position and not the name. And we just did it. We had somebody that is loved by everybody in this town, who's in this position, but we have to do it for the position, not the name.
Right. And I think that's what Keith was making clear, and I fudged the waters, muddied the waters by saying the name, but I believe it is--
But we all thought it.
This is what position, yeah.
I mean, we all, you know, we all thought it, so.
So, okay.
All right. Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, subsection 1, to designate the position of school crossing guard as special municipal employee.
Seconded. I moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nays? All right. Now we're on to Council on Aging gift fund accounts. Is this Bonnie or Keith?
These are two requests that have come to us from the Council on Aging. Their board voted on February 20th. They asked that you accept these two gifts, which you can -- you'll read in the motion, but it's a total of $14,000 that's being made available from two sources in town for our -- for needy Littleton residents, including our fuel assistance program. So we thank these donors very much for their--
Yeah, I think one I'm familiar with, as a member, from St. Anne's Parish, and I noticed that they are just a -- they really seem to be a partner in the community. I didn't know they did this every year, but they also have the soccer fields there, and I think it's just a great partnership we have with this church, and I'm sure many other churches, but this one's on the table right now, so. We appreciate that very much. Anybody else?
Any comments? Ready? Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to receive and deposit into special gift fund established on November 2nd, 2009 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 53A, for energy and other assistance to the needy in Littleton residents, a gift of $8,000 from the Henry Vincent Cooper Charitable Foundation, and a gift of $6,000 from the parishioner -- from a parishioner of St. Anne's Parish.
Seconded. And moved and seconded to accept the donations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Could we get a letter also, just a quick letter, Jen, of appreciation or thanks? If you wanna send me some drafts, I can try to put some fishing touches on it. Thank you. Is that okay, Keith?
Great, thank you.
Okay. Littleton Conservation Trust. Mr. Finley is here. We're early.
Are you all here?
Are you prepared to go?
Okay, great.
You don't want to wait for me?
I didn't know if he has the rest of the crowd coming in 10 minutes. You are the crowd. Okay.
Yeah.
You are the committee.
All right.
So Kathy and I run a committee for the trust that are trying to straighten out some of the irregularities of plot ownership in Long Lake Park and some elsewhere on parkland, where we were getting calls from alarmed people because people have been in there with backhoes, digging, you know, testing soil on private lots. And we decided that we really don't want to see any houses being built on what is essentially parkland. Some of these lots are within the bounds of Long Lake Park, and some of them are on the edges of, but bounded by trails that go through the Shoville Woodlands, which is sort of the extension of the Yap property over by University Drive. So I just had told Keith that I would let you know that we're in this process of notifying the private owners, but at the same time, the ownership of a lot of the lots, particularly around Colonial Drive, where this is an issue, are also mixed ownership between town property and Conservation Commission property. So what the big picture is, we'd like to consolidate all of them. We'd love to get rid of the privately owned ones somehow, if possible, and then have the lots that are owned by the town, I guess under the selectmen, transferred to Conservation Commission, which is the rest of Long Lake Park, and get that consolidated under one ownership. That's our basic goal. We're contacting the landowners using the Massachusetts land gift tax incentive, which gives them 50% with some cash options as a way of encouraging them to get their lots turned over to the town. A lot of these are lots that have been in family possessions for 100 years, and ownership is questionable on some of them. So we're not sure where we're going with this, but we've been in contact with a few already that are looking to -- they'd love to be able to sell it at a loss, not as a loss, but half price to the town.
Yeah, less than value, yeah.
Exactly. So we're in the middle of this, and we just wanted you to know that we're working on it. There is an option of bringing something to town meeting in the spring, which would take care of the transfer of the town properties. I would urge us to do that. I think it's a good idea as one aspect of this project.
Should they? Just for the public, can you explain what Long Lake Park actually is, what lands and encompasses are?
In terms of total acreage, no.
And in Long Lake Park, is that all conservation land?
It's considered all conservation land, but it's not all owned by the Conservation Commission. As I said, part of it's owned by the town because of the nature of these small lots left over from the development. I don't know that we can get -- you've got -- that's good.
Yeah, what I'm showing is the tax title properties around Long Lake are in red, according to the town's GIS system.
Those are tax titles. Those are not the properties they're interested in.
They're actually making it the ones in the lower left corner.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, let me see if I can--
No.
These properties also get vetted through the land committee for the sale when we--
Yes, they do, yeah. So-- Yep, they've been looking at it.
I think we did a bunch around, was it Two Brothers Trail? Is that right?
Probably not, Two Brothers.
I thought it was one that we went down by the lake somewhere.
Yeah, no, I have Two Brothers, actually, is on the other side of the lake, so that goes through net property.
Right.
But I don't think there were any lots. Oh, yeah, they're actually -- you think you know, you're absolutely right. Top of the hill by Washington or somewhere up there.
Exactly.
That's my bridge.
This is like three tax maps, and the orange one's, if Long Lake's up here at the top, and this is Colonial coming through. Those are all questionable. Some of them are owned by AT&amp;T, but we've -- I've talked to people at AT&amp;T, and they really prefer to have easements, so they may, yeah. You can see it now.
Come up a hardwood there towards the bottom.
Can we just point out where--
This is what you're talking about.
Those area, that area primarily, yeah.
So, yeah, some of those are--
Right, most of it is paper roads.
It's all paper road stuff. That's why the contractors have just gone in on the paper roads, which are dirt roads, sort of, and then just dug holes everywhere.
Are privately owned parcels at this point?
Yeah. Apparently not with permission, because I've talked to some people that said, what? Somebody was -- so I think they just went in, and then they knew where all the private ones were. They may have been going in to look at somebody's who they had permission from, but they just simply--
They moved around, yeah, yeah.
They moved around.
Without money, yes. Well, this is -- this is where it turns about paper road here?
A little bit -- yeah, right about there, yeah, that's about right.
So that would be kind of disturbing, all of a sudden, seeing people going down there. I mean, you don't know who owns what, seeing some backhoes going through there all of a sudden. I know there's a trail going down, but--
Right.
All I want--
Anybody else have anything?
We should--
So it's an opportunity to just introduce the idea to the board. Our staff would have to do some more work between now and closing the warrant if there were to be an article to be brought forward, that you -- because there are basically -- there are two things going on. One is that for if there are private owners who wanna make a donation to the trust or to the Conservation Commission, that's sort of some of the outreach that's being done. But then other pieces of that puzzle in red that we just saw are town-owned properties, which we would--
Just transfer.
If they're in tax title, it would take a -- I think it would take a vote at town meeting to do that, so.
I'll add, if we could get those specific -- I mean, there were a lot of little red dots up there. If we could get the specific parcels and then, you know, connects to this property, the Morgan property, the whatever properties that they, you know-- the Morgan property, the whatever, properties that they, you know, link.
Almost all of these are just within the park.
Just, just within Long Lake.
Within Long Lake Park, that's why it's so.
Sure, sure.
They're right in the middle, surrounded on all sides by town.
If we can get those locations and the lot numbers and stuff like that, I think that'd be very helpful for us to make some decisions and know that they are landlocked, so to speak.
We can, I mean, I've been working with Steve, he's been, he's been giving me all his marked up stuff, that's what this is.
Right.
And we've got, we do have lists, and we have different types.
So what's the scope? How many total lots do you think it is?
Well, for us, we're under 10.
Well, the number of lots is a little different. We have 11 owners, some of them have multiple lots, but only a few. So we're only talking probably 15, 16 lots for the private, privately owned.
Interesting.
And the town, actually, I didn't count it.
There may be 10 or something, I'm not sure. But we'll get, we'll get you that information.
I think it definitely makes sense to bring all the town properties into one ownership. And if we can, you know, if these lots, if we can get them on a, you know, for, without paying a lot out of the town's.
Right, right.
You know, we can somehow make it a win-win, I think it sounds good.
Just in general, how much land is it?
These are small lots, I mean, they're, some of them are 100 by 100 feet. But the problem is, some of them could be built on. And even, even 100 by 100, we just, can we say that?
Right, yeah, 10,000 square feet.
Anything over 5,000?
Anything over 5,000, that's 50 feet of frontage. Of course, you'd have to make the roads, make the frontage.
And it's very possible that these did not perk.
Yeah, you don't know how the soil is down there?
What's that?
You don't know how the soil is?
It's not very good.
Because you know, because there's an online soil survey now that you can pull up this, and find out, you know.
They're all listed as unbuildable.
And it's gonna be, obviously it's gonna be high groundwater, too, that whole place floods.
Yes.
And we've been working with the state, the state's gonna come back to us to give us an idea whether these people would actually qualify for the tax, the land incentive tax program. And that's all based on, on the quality of the land also, and the use of it, whether it's natural land or parkland or.
Unless I'm reading the board wrong, I think you have the blessing to go ahead and please keep us updated, and it sounds like a good plan. So I really appreciate you bringing it in. When I first read it, it was some, it wasn't quite clear, so I appreciate you coming in and finding us.
Thank you.
Will you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Keith, we talked about this one a little earlier, it's not a public hearing, for Common Foods, a little sub shop pub on the Common.
No, they will be here.
They will be here.
Yeah, the attorney.
They will be here.
Yeah, he'll be coming, he has a commitment that he would not be able to be here until a little while.
Okay. Shall we move on to item 6 and 6A?
Mark.
Looking at, so the complete streets policy, Smart Growth America ranks number one. That was something that you announced earlier, Keith, that it was all off your Twitter feed and?
Yeah, see, I announced it publicly, but I wanted to have it for the record of this meeting as well, that the complete streets policy, that M A P C helped us draft, and which this board enacted on December 16th, has been ranked number one in the country among policies of its kind. And it was Smart Growth America's National Complete Streets Program, they made the announcement last week. I was interested to see that number 11 was Mass DOT. And, and actually, that's good, and I'm happy that they're, that they're on the list, too, because as I was explaining to Lindsay with the paper, that a lot that we're gonna try to accomplish in this town, and that we need to accomplish to make it safe for pedestrians and bicyclists, is, is going to involve the group that controls the state roads. I mean, whether it's, you know, crosswalks or signalization or whatever, a lot of the things that we would want to address sidewalks. Those are, those are things which we have been advocating with, with state government for, for quite a while. School committee has brought it to our attention, we brought it to the state, so that I hope that that indicates that there may be some kind of partnership between what the town is doing and what, what the state's doing. I think it's also very timely that at the State House, the transportation bond bill is, is making its, its way through, and, and there is provision in some versions for funding, a special pot of funding for communities that are, that have enacted a complete streets policy. That money's not in place yet, but if it ever were to be, I think we, we might be positioned to be able to, to go after that funding. But certainly, the, some of the major capital projects, the road projects in particular, sidewalk improvement plan and other things like that, we'll be, we'll be bringing forward, are consistent with a policy, we've been working with Sam Park on what, what pretends to be a very pedestrian-friendly development at the point. So I, I hope we're heading in the right direction, and I think it's, it's well that the town is getting recognition for what we're doing, so.
So this is great news, because this is the kind of stuff that the chair gets to go on a junket, to pick up this award someplace nice and warm and sunny and.
No, not this time. No, they did, they did have a conference call.
Oh, they don't have a big, they don't have a big awards ceremony and bring everybody down for the awards?
Well, they should send us something, though.
I think I told them someplace called Yellowknife.
A check, I'll leave it in the.
Anyway, regardless, it's good news. And I did actually see this come into play, because I went to the local concerns meeting for new estate the other day, and that was part of the discussion, how this would.
Have a sidewalk there, yeah. And, and staff will be, you know, we'll, we'll schedule board time to finalize some of the direction on that project. We will be doing a review of, of the recommendations in accordance with the policy, just so you have that perspective at your disposal.
So just out of curiosity, with the policy we had, we adopted, it was pretty much a derivative of recommended practices and stuff that other people, I'm assuming, are going after. I just, I'm curious how we ended up vaulting to the top so quickly.
I, I don't know, well, I, I, it was, it was definitely a collaborative effort. I certainly want to, to give all the credit to M A P C and Chris Kutchel, who worked with us, came to numerous meetings, whether a couple of planning board meetings, he was here a couple, several times, the, met with staff on occasion. And through that process, I think we, we worked through a lot of drafts, and it just kept getting better and better and more specific. And we were really trying to focus on what would, what would be something beyond just a policy statement, but show us what, you know, what does the, what is the implementation strategy look like for it? And I guess we were able to put together, unbeknownst to us, maybe Chris knew, I didn't realize that what we were piecing together was.
Be nationally recognized.
Well.
Can we go back to number five now? Do we have representatives for Common Foods here?
Yeah, it looks like Attorney Burke is here.
Are you prepared? We're ahead of schedule, if you'd like to go, we can.
That'd be great, I'd love to get on tonight.
Yeah, we have some dinner here, we were just passing around dinner, if you'd like some, you know.
Very good.
So, yeah, we don't, we streets, yeah. So there's an update that Keith is gonna provide some of the details, but as it stands right now, the board had the liquor license for Pub On The Common before us to be renewed on January 1st, and there was some question about ADA compliance and M A A B compliance. And we agreed to extend the license until the hearing was held. The hearing was then postponed, so we extended it again. And now there have been certain conditions that have been put on, that they can get their occupancy permit if they meet a few things. I understand a lot of those things were small, and they have been met, and there's one outstanding issue. With that, Keith, I'll turn it over to you to see if I missed anything.
Yeah, I think that, that's it, that, and first I wanted to mention that, that Attorney Burke has been keeping us updated with the progress of his, of his client at the Architectural Access Board. We did receive a copy of the A A B's decision, partial approval, partial non-approval of the variance request. And, and they were requiring that you submit further application or something to go to the next steps. My, and I was talking with Attorney Burke earlier today, my read of what it all means is that, is that the A A B has established sort of a date of June 1st, by which they expect the facility to be in compliance. And the main issue being the exterior, the exterior access, the exterior ramp. So that from our standpoint, we're up till now, the board's several votes have, in essence, been to conditionally approve it or extend it, conditional upon the A A B taking whatever action is necessary. It seemed like the next logical step for us to take, since A A B has set a deadline of June 1st, for, by which time you need to be in compliance, that, that any approval that the board gives through that date would seem at least consistent with what the A A B is doing. And should they not, then I guess we'd, we'd be back and talking about what the next steps are.
The, the issue of the ramp and it not being compliant has raised some, some issues regarding just the building itself. The ramp has a granite stone that sticks out perpendicular from the foundation. And that was the reason why the ramp doesn't have the proper sloping. And, and the, the access board was concerned about that. But the problem is, if we move the door, which is the entrance to the sub shop to the left, we now have to take out the radiator and do major alterations to the heating system and the facade of the store. So we're trying to work with the board to see if there are some other alternatives that would be acceptable. And although we may be able to propose a, a plan of action that would require a variance, but still be palatable to the access board, like if we can get some slope or take out that granite stone, which is, would be very expensive and, and, and I think prohibitive for, for the type of business we have and the type of income that they generate there. So we're, we're going to be meeting with the board, the access board, at some time to discuss some viable alternatives to the ramp. And the reason why I bring that up is because we, we need to get new plans drawn up from the architect, who should have flagged a lot of these issues before it really got the ball rolling, if you will. And so we have to get some plans together for the board, or if we're not going to do a ramp, if we propose some other type of solution to that, we may have to get creative in how we address the facade out front. So I think the access board is, is willing to work with us to either come up with a compliant ramp or an alternative that may allow for a variance. And, and the reason why I bring that up is because June 1st may come along, and we may not have a compliant ramp, but we may have an application in for a variance on another proposed plan. And I hate to keep coming back to the board every three months and, and asking for an extension and this, but I will say that in good faith, Greg has been, has been working very hard. When we first went to the access board and asked for one variance on the ramp, we thought that it was a, a one degree, or a little more pushing the one degree idea, slope variation from what Roland had mentioned before, similar to the school situation. And what it turned out to be on a site visit was that it was too much. That the slope starts correctly, but when it hits that granite spot, and then it comes down, it extends out so much that it doesn't give us that enough space to slope it down to where the door or the entrance is. So we may need, if we have to come into compliance, we may have to rip up the whole ramp, address the issue of the granite stone that's there, and see if we can get the slope corrected. Or, or, which I'm not sure we can, we may just be able to get it to a degree enough for a variance to be allowed. I don't know how long that's going to take to get plans, to get a pricing, to get the job done. I'm not sure if, you know, 90 days is, is, is enough. And, and I think it's gonna be a matter of finances for Greg to do that, too, although. So I asked maybe, instead of doing it June 1st, is maybe extending it out a little longer, if that could be an option, so that we're not here repeatedly asking for, having to say, listen, we finally got a plan together, and we, we need more time.
What if, if it sounds like, if I could, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like you're, you'll be in constant communication with the Architectural Access Board over this period of time. So maybe the same thing could be accomplished if they give you an extension. Maybe the way if the board were to draft the, the language, to say like June 1st or to such later date as approved by the A A B. So that, and I get your point, you know, you don't want to keep coming back, we don't want to have to have you coming back, but at the same time, if, if, if the timetable is, if the vote reflects that it's, that it's extended in accordance with any extensions you get from the A A B, then we'll know that it's moving forward and you're addressing it. And so if you get them to extend, I don't know what you do if they don't extend June 1st. Maybe the building commissioner can tell us that. But, but if, if you're working with them and they give you till, you know, suddenly till September 1st, then, then you're, you know, you're, it seems to me like you're addressing with the group that you should be addressing it with.
But I, I will address, one of the issues is, even if we, we decide to put a compliant ramp in there or get a variance, we still may have to move the door. And if we decide for an alternative type of entrance, we may have to take out the whole, the ramp, including the granite, to make it level so that we can get a lift. Because the way that the access is now, is the handicap access is to the left of the building and far to the right. And the only way you can get to far to the right is if you contend with parked cars and the crosswalk, where the crosswalk is located. So you're at the other end of the building. So it doesn't appear to be even a viable option to introduce something on the other end of the building, so. And I brought that up to the director of the access board, and he kind of was scratching his head, saying, you really do have a big problem here that we need to kind of jump on and focus. And, and the only thing I can say about Greg is, is he's like, whatever I need to do to get this done, I'm gonna try to do it financially and feasibly and, and also appropriately. He hasn't been trying to, you know, play games with this at all. He's, he's been very transparent about this whole thing, I, I believe. And his efforts have been commendable, because the, the letter that we got the other day, you know, soon as we found out from the site visit, which was only a site visit for the ramp, but ended up coming back with multiple other issues, we, we were on it right away. And, and we had to make alterations to the steps in between the two establishments and.
So were you asking for a date like September 1st or something?
September 1st would make me much more comfortable, to be honest with you, because I could, by September 1st, I know that the weather will be better, I know that we'll be able to get in our, at the architects, some plans. And I'll be honest with you, one of the things that came up was, you may have to take up the whole front sidewalk and figure something out that way. And I, and it's just, you know, when you start talking about something like that, the owner's eyes kind of glaze over as, this is something I can't even fathom. So it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be a creative solution at some point. But I'm hoping that we're able to work it out.
I know Roland's here, maybe, Mr. Chair, you wanna ask for?
I think we have everything we need, but if Roland has anything to add, I mean, it seems to be kind of, Roland's kind of waiting for what the A A B, and we come back with.
Yeah, so, I mean, one, one question is that, from Roland's standpoint, if the A A B's date of June 1 comes and goes, is that, is that?
With regards to the license?
Well, we're. Well, regards to the variance.
If the date goes, I guess I don't understand the question.
Well, if, if there's a date of June 1st, by which time the AAB says the exterior entrance has to be compliant and it's not, what does that mean under the, under any of the things that you administer?
It doesn't mean anything. The AAB is a very aggressive state entity. They're not going to let go of this. They're just going to keep prodding along until it's resolved. I have, I have no worries about that at all.
I think, and that's good to hear, because I think my concern is that this had, this kind of dragged along for a little while. I think he had a, I think Roland, he said one time he had a year or something to come into compliance, and that year came and passed, and now we're at, you know, we're, we find ourselves being rushed on this. But it seems that there's somebody else on top of it to keep it rolling with the AAB. You have hard dates now, so...
And they're willing to work with us, too, which was, I was happy to hear the Director and also the Compliance Officer, who we met with at the, when he did the site visit. He was very helpful and actually, he was very surprised that the Board denied the variance based on the issue of the granite stone being there. He was a bit surprised about that, to be honest with you. So he's going to work with us as well. Anything else from the Board?
I think, you know, I like the idea of fixing a date rather than having it go coinciding with whatever the Board is working on. That way we'll, that gives us a deadline, and if it takes that long, then we probably should hear from you again. So I like to put in a definite date.
Do you have an idea which date you're looking, thinking about?
I think the September date is about as far out as I'd like to go.
Okay. I just didn't know if you were thinking June or September, that's all.
Anybody else?
I just have a quick one. As far as the Access Board goes, if Greg is forced to take out the ramp for any reason, what does, what does it mean in the meantime for people to have access to the, to the pub?
Right now, if he takes the, if he has to take the ramp out, he would have to put an elevator system in, a lift system for individuals. And I'm not sure if that's practical on the outside, to be honest with you. I don't, that's not my area of expertise. Right now, the situation is there's a doorbell on the outside and there's a sign that says anybody that needs assistance, please press the doorbell. The individuals have all been told that this particular doorbell, if it's pressed, that somebody's out there needing assistance with the ramp. I'm hoping that if the solution calls for the ramp to be removed, that it will be in short order, to be honest with you, because there'll be no way either way.
I just had, the concern of the other issues being dealt with, Roland, have they all been signed off? Are they good to go in regards to the other issues that the, that were brought up, the violations?
The other AAB violations? I haven't checked them yet. I haven't been told that.
Is that your role to check them or is that the AAB?
Both of us are going to check them. But once the AAB gets a hold of this, I can just watch.
Yeah, okay. As I was wondering.
Well, I will, I will say that we've either received variances to cure some of the non-compliant issues, and some of the other issues were like the height of the mirror, things like that. There were six of them, and they've all been taken care of, and photos have been sent. Five of the issues, photos have been sent, and today the sixth one was sent. So those issues have been resolved. And the real big issue now is just the ramp.
And I think that, you know, the September date is a, you know, absolutely acceptable one, I still...
All right.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote relative to the all-alcoholic Carmen vehicular license for Carmen Foods, Inc., Gregory P. Ether's manager, doing business as Littleton Sub Shop, AKA Pub on the Carmen, 486 King Street, as follows. To further extend the temporary license through September 1st, 2014, pending further action of the Architectural Access Board.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Good luck. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
See you before September 1st, hopefully. So, thank you.
We'll keep you informed either way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. This brings us to 6B. Bonnie, is this a pretty routine item here, the Financial Auditor's contract extension?
Yes, yes, it's a full year extension. They are completing their last year fiscal 2013 audit as we speak. The auditor did agree to uphold the pricing at the same level, which I was very pleased about. And we're very satisfied with the auditor services. They've done a great job keeping us in line with our bond ratings and everything, so...
When would the $7,000 or $3,500 additional audits come into play?
They come into play every year. It's based on how much federal money that the town receives. If we receive a certain amount, then we have to have a single audit. So between the school department and the town, we always, we always end up getting at least a single audit.
And those prices were held per, per event?
For the last one.
So 27, 750, the 7,000, and the 3,500 are all held?
It's actually the 27, 750 plus the 7,000, which is two $3,500.
Right, but those are held?
Yep.
None of those were...
Same price.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to execute the contract for Independent Auditing Services for the Town of Littleton fiscal year 2014, 2015, and 2016 with Gusty?
Jisty.
Jisty, Hengston and Company, Certified Public Accountants of Georgetown, Massachusetts, and the base amount of $27,750 per year, plus up to an additional $7,000 per year either for in major program audits at $3,500, $3,500 each. That may be required under the Single Audit Act or for additional work requested by the town.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we have Nagog Orchard Lease. This is another formality, I believe. I think we all understand that the, the value of the work that is done out there by Mr. Auger, and that this is something that I believe we want to do. I don't know if there's anything else.
Yeah, the only thing that I just want to call to your attention is that it's been our practice over the last several years to do a one-year, 12-month extension. I had a phone conversation, which is reflected in this, this proposed motion, and Charles Auger has asked if you could approve a, an extension through July 1st, 2015, rather than simply through, through March 1st. That's the amount he wanted. We've been routinely extending it. You've taken a vote back in December to extend the only other agricultural lease we have through November of 2015, so it didn't, and actually I discussed that November 20, that November date with Charlie, and he thought that wouldn't work for him as well as a, as a July 1st date, so I said I would carry that recommendation forward. Bonnie, as our Chief Procurement Officer, simply has to make the determination, which she has made, that the value of the lease between, the value of a 16-month lease is also under $25,000. The 12-month we knew was, it's based on a value of about $15,500. For the 12 months, that works out to be $20,600 and change for 16-month lease. In either event, it's below the threshold of $25,000, so you can lawfully do it without public bidding, so... All right. But I, yeah, I felt that if the, if the lessee wanted to get that extension, and we've been routinely extending it, I didn't see any reason not to.
It's fine by me. It just seems strange that we talked about the other lease had to be based on growing seasons and things like that, but if he's, this seems mid-season.
Well, his, his growing season would, he said, well, December would make sense for him, November wouldn't. And I said, well, we can't, it doesn't, I said, I can't keep it below $25,000 through December.
It makes sense. It actually lines up with fiscal year. We have had a couple items and issues brought up out there. Has the contract been rewritten to, for, to clarify any things like that? I know there were some misunderstandings before and...
So it's, it's on the same terms and conditions as the existing contract. I know we had some issues that were...
That were the existing contract.
That were dealt with.
So they were, we were protected under the existing contract? It was just maybe his misunderstanding or something?
Yeah, we didn't, in the end of the day, I don't think we suffered any financial harm.
No, no, Lisa. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to execute further extension from March 1st, 2014, to July 1, 2015, of the June 22nd, 2,000 lease agreement with Nagog Futers, Inc., for Morrison/Nagog Hill Orchard property, in the same terms and conditions as the lease has extended.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Keith, we've got the May 5th Annual and Special Tell Meeting to discuss.
Yes, we have a few items to talk about specifically, and if we wish, we might want to, we actually have quite a bit of time to talk about remaining items, since the next item...
We can't cut to until 8:45.
Well, yeah, we can. Rather than drone, rather than drone on, we could...
If you'd like to talk about medical marijuana for 45 minutes, you can, I know, I'm sure we will, once we get there, but the Planning Board...
He's a Doritos if we're going to do that.
...Board had a meeting last Thursday when they reviewed with Town Council the current working drafts of three proposed zoning amendments that they're bringing forward, one on medical marijuana, the other on accessory dwellings, and there is on flood insurance rate maps. We have those draft town meeting articles with us attached to the agenda packet tonight. This is the current working form, it's not the final form. The final form will come after the March 13th public hearing under Chapter 40A, Section 5, which the Planning Board will be holding on these proposed zoning amendments. So they'll get finalized before the warrant closes on March 21st. And the, for the proposed medical marijuana bylaw, they have developed with the assistance of our IT department, is a GIS map showing, you know, the various locations, which zoning districts, which distances. I don't have those maps here with us, but they are, they are available, will be available at the public hearing. The draft of the accessory dwelling zoning amendment that you have here will be, will be amended. That the draft that they were discussing, where they, the Planning Board directed Town Council to revise so that it would not, so that essentially to limit the creation of any new accessory units. They're hoping to be able to, if there's an existing, if there's an existing structure which could be, a portion of which could be made into an accessory unit, that's one thing, but they didn't, they didn't want to encourage any non-existent accessory structures to be, to come into being as a result of the bylaws. So they're addressing that in the language.
Why would that be?
Well, why, why, why don't they want to have, because they don't want to have an additional structure. If there's a, if there's a barn or something or a garage that's there, now, the Planning Board did not want to encourage that there be an additional structure built next to the main structure.
So it's opinion of, well, it's the opinion of five.
If it's a brand-new building, you can't put an accessory dwelling on it, is that...
That's, that's the flavor of what the conversation was. There was a concern that, that there would be an abundance of two standalone structures built where right now the zoning bylaw only allows for a single family.
I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, I, so it's, it's, you can't, you can have an addition put on the house for an in-law apartment, but you can't have an existing building turned into a in-law apartment?
They didn't want to have detached, their main concern was in detached structures, not attached. And, and they didn't, they didn't mind, they didn't mind an extension onto an existing structure. What they minded is if it was, you know, McMansion and mini me over here, so...
Off to the side. But then are they limiting new construction to be, not to have accessory dwellings, I guess? I guess if, if someone's building a house, they want to put an accessory building attached to it, are they saying, no, they're not going to allow that? Because I thought one of the reasons was to provide housing.
Yeah, it, the, the only written narrative we have on the change is that Town, if you look at the, at the very top of the proposed accessory dwelling zoning amendment, and there's a note in italics, which is from Town Council, that points out that his original draft would allow for the creation of accessory dwelling units up to 900 square feet that would be rented to any tenant. After discussion at its February 10th meeting, the Planning Board instructed Town Council to draft a new scaled back proposal. That revised version, which Town Council is currently preparing, will allow an existing accessory dwelling that was, that was created to serve a relative or functional dependent of the property owner to be converted to a true rental unit after the original occupant ceases to need, to need the accessory unit. The revised version would not otherwise allow for the creation of a new accessory unit. So it's, it's rather limited to what the original scope of the article was. And that will be the subject of the public hearing on the 13th.
Still under 900 square feet, though? Up to 900 square feet? Does that not change it, or?
But you canceled the new one, right?
Well, we'll see, we'll see when we get Town Council's next iteration, which we've not seen yet, so... The last article that they have is to adopt the new floodplain maps for, for Littleton. These, well, we've heard that there are some problems with some floodplain maps in Plymouth County and other coastal areas. The, the maps that FEMA has come up with for Middlesex County are not going to change. And so that we're, we've been advised by the state agency that oversees it to make sure that our zoning bylaw does incorporate the latest maps and that those are in place by, by this, by this summer.
So essentially, there's no change in the town?
The new maps are not going to be changed again?
Yeah, the, the new maps that were released a year ago, which are different to some degree from the maps that are currently referenced in our bylaw, that those draft maps that were issued are not going to change again, whereas the coastal maps that FEMA commissioned, there's been much talk about those maps being based on incorrect science and that the Congressional delegation has been trying to get FEMA to change their mind, that we're not, these maps are not part of that discussion. FEMA may or may not change those maps, but these, these maps are sound.
The drafts are now coming to...
The draft that we have is not going to change, so we are directed to adopt them, so that we comply, continue to comply with the, with the FEMA program. So those are, those are three. There might, I'm sensing there might be some tweaking of zoning amendments, just from flurry of recent emails on some administrative things that have come up. There may be, I'm not sure if it would be now or the fall town meeting, but we'll, we'll work with Town Council. There've been a couple of bugs in some other zoning articles. So those are, those are the three articles that we're asking for the Board to take action on tonight. The warrant closes on the 21st of March, so we'll continue to bring other things forward. The, at the very end of this packet, I put a list of articles that we're dealing with. The ones that you've already inserted are shown in, are shown in bold, so we're still looking at, at the Enterprise Fund budget... at the enterprise fund budgets, capital projects, which we're, which we're hoping to finalize or come closer to on March 10. The facilities.
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday at 6 o'clock, the working group to deal with facilities is going to meet. That will be an important opportunity to go through, you know, a long list of capital projects and see if we can come up with ones that meet the $450,000 that Bonnie is allotting for us. And the personnel board is still working on bylaw amendments. And they're just, the community preservation committee is continuing to work on their recommendations, but I think we're, I think we've got a good handle on, on the remainder of the warrant.
All right, well, thank you. Being 8:05.
Want a motion?
Do we need to motion that? Yeah, sorry, I was all the way down to the bottom. I'm so excited to go to recess. I was so excited to be so far ahead.
See if you had a paper thing, you'd be.
I'm there now.
Were the board of selectmen vote for some of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Subsection 5, to refer, to refer to the planning board the following proposed zoning amendments received for the May 5, 2014 annual town meeting? One, medical marijuana; two, accessory dwellings; and three, flood insurance rate maps. And to insert said articles in the warrant, subject to the approval as, as to form by town council.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, you can run through the minutes here.
Issues?
No.
Comments?
We're talking about half hour, you can get the, Kirby to put up the test pattern.
Get the replay on, watch the minutes be developed.
Yeah.
All set?
Yep.
Issues? Make a motion for the board of selectmen to approve the minutes from Monday, January 27, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that's everything. So where we stand right now is we've gone through everything on our agenda, and we have a public hearing at 8:45 that cannot be opened until 8:45. So I think we should consider the board recess until 8:45 if there's no objections.
That's what we can do.
Yeah, well, I mean, if we wanted to see or talk about something, but we can talk informally.
The only thing we could do is talk more about town meeting, because that would be covered. And I haven't all the room discussed, so.
Have we had this before?
We haven't had it, no, it's unprecedented, so.
Maybe go around the room and tell, tell stories.
We can back, open up back up the public, public input.
Somebody bring a deck of cards?
Hey, we can bring up House of Cards.
I think our recess sounds like the safest thing.
Recession, okay. Kirby needs, Kirby's got, I don't have a slide for that.
Recession until 8:45.
So do we turn the machine off?
Yeah.
Did we motion that? Do we have to do that?
I think you should, yeah, move to recess until 8:45.
Motion's been to recess until 8:45.
Motion been made and, no, second.
Second.
All those in favor recess until 8:45, signify by saying aye.
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 What else we do?
Oh, she's got it.
About ready, Kirby?
Maybe, maybe.
All right, good evening again. With the time being 8:45, I will attempt to move on here. We have a public hearing, and I have to read the announcements. So here's the legal notice for the Board of Selectmen, public hearing. Wine and malt package store license application, GW Archer, Inc., 500 King Street, Littleton. The Littleton Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, February 24th, 2014, at 8:45 PM in the Littleton Town Offices, Room 103, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460, to act on the application under Mass. General Law, Chapter 138 of GW Archer, Inc., Gary W. Archer, manager for retail package store license, wine and malt beverages for the GW Archer, Inc., aka Mobile Station, located at 500 King Street in Littleton, Massachusetts. The applicant is seeking a license for the sale of beer and wine, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and on Sunday, 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to the Selectmen Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, on 01460 by noon on Friday, February 21st, 2014, or in person at the hearing. And Littleton Board of Selectmen, Ted Dusset, Chair. Keith, was there any...
In writing? We did not receive any letters. We received the packet from the applicant, which is included here, including the proof of service to the butters, which included one church within 500 feet.
Okay. All right, then. I think we are ready to go, then. I think, are there any questions, or should we, from the board, or should we just open it right up to the applicant?
I would open it to the applicant.
Okay. Sure, we have to say. All right. Good evening.
Hi, Gary Archer, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Can I pull the chair up, or do you want to sit over here?
It's all right, that's fine. They're set up with the cameras, so if you come to the front row or something, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. So thank you for... Sorry to keep you out here so late tonight. It's our fault.
You said, "Is it gendered?"
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for seeing me tonight. I'm not sure if you, if you folks know, but I'm actually renovating my location at 518 Street, my convenience store. I'm actually moving the bays, and I'm making it into a large convenience store with a joint venture. And with that, I'm trying to offset some of my, some of the expenses that I'm planning on doing, making a large capital investment, and I'm trying to get ready for the Littleton 3M anniversary. And with that, it's, I've thought about the beer and wine situation. I have it in my Air location, I think you guys are aware of that, and it's been very successful. I've never had an issue with the town. I've got a letter from the town indicating that they're happy with what I've done so far. I understand the responsibilities of obtaining a beer and wine license, I'm a very responsible individual, and I understand the, you know, the laws and regulations going along with it. I'm tips trained, my manager, general manager here, Carol Coleman, she's also tip trained. All of my employees are tips trained, or some kind of alcohol training course, better than other of them. We have a lot of things in place, stands in place. Like I said, we're all trained. All of my employees have tools to help them with the WeCard program that I applied to. We have a device, it's called legal software, I'm not sure if you're aware of it or not, but I have a device in my Air location, and I'm pointing it out here because that's where my, that's where my, you know, that's where I conduct the business now. And I have this device, and this device actually helps me to look at IDs, and help to make sure that they're okay. And the only IDs I accept are Massachusetts IDs, liquor IDs by Massachusetts, government, military IDs, and US passports, or US passports are US recognized. I don't accept New Hampshire or other states, I don't know those licenses, we don't accept those. And WeCard everyone, regardless of age, regardless of how much they, how many times they come to us frequently, they are Carded each and every time. My own wife got Carded one day, and they know her pretty well, and she went out of the car and got her license, and she purchased a bottle of wine. So they follow the rules and they follow the regulations, and we felt this is a voluntary thing we want to do. I felt that was the best thing to do, took my business. I can't, it's hard for me, or hard for maybe one of you to say, that person's under 30, you know, we all have a little bit of a different feeling of who, who person is. So my thoughts were, you know what, let's just make it very safe, and let's be responsible. So I felt that WeCard everyone, as if you go to a stadium somewhere here, WeCard everyone, and everyone's used to it. Customers come in, they see your ID, and they know. We have signs up if you come in the door, we have signs at the pay point, and we have signs up on the coolers. And I think it's a nice asset to my business, it's a, I'm basically not trying to take away from anyone else, it's an ancillary part of my business, and I'm trying to just take care of the customers' needs and make sure that people have the one-stop shopping. Customers that I'm taking care of, I want to make sure I can take care of their needs.
All right, so included with the application, there is a letter from the Littleton Police Department, from Sergeant Patterson, giving a summary of what he knows about this business owner. Would you like to speak now, summarize your letter, or do you have anything to say, Sergeant?
Evening. Basically, it's the opinion of the department that Mr. Archer has submitted all the necessary paperwork and everything to meet the criteria of your board's requests for a liquor license. The department would not object to him being provided a liquor license. We have known him as the department for a long time to be a very conscientious businessman within town, and that's basically how the department's issues are right now.
Good, glad to hear it. We also have a letter in our packet from the Board of Selectmen from Air, from the town administrator there, saying that there's no violations on record, and that there's no reports of misconduct with their police department there. And that's the, there's a list of the training policies, some of what you just covered here, and that's the end of the packet. So it seems to be a complete application, Keith, you would have made sure that it wouldn't get this far if it wasn't. So with that, I can turn it over to the board, and we can start with Alex, if you have anything.
Are we, the only thing I would ask is, are we going to, I particularly noticed this in the Air stuff, that there's certain stipulations that were placed, that Air placed on you. Are those agreeable to you?
They are.
Can you describe them?
The last page.
The last page, okay, yeah. Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to get them for the record, if anyone wants to state what they are for the record.
I'll go through them if you'd like.
Just quickly, yeah, if you want to cover them, just so we have it in part of the meeting.
Number one, there's no selling of beer and wine without proper documentation, proof of age, we've already heard him address that, which is stored in the computer database for each sale. That, I guess I do have a question about, what, what does it mean by?
What I have, Alex, is on my, on my point of sale, I have a, I have a pop-up on my screen, and it tells the cashier to enter the date of birth, year, month, and date of birth, and they can do that, and they also have a device, the, the legal software that I described earlier, I purchased that to help my cashiers, this is a voluntary thing on my part. And the things I've done, the WeCard program and the security software, something I did to help my sales associates to better understand, you know, what they're dealing with and their responsibility of having that license and making the proper sale.
So the, the only thing that's being entered, entered is the date of birth of, that the,
The purchaser, the customer.
That the employee notices, or?
Yeah, when, well, when we, when we Card the people, we would take the ID, and we could put the date, month, and year in. And it'll, and it'll either, if we put a wrong date in, put something, you know, that's not, the person's not of age, it would deny this, it would just shut the sale down, it would cancel the wholesale. So it's actually a safeguard that we can, we can put the date of birth in, and, for example, I put in, you know, something three years from now, it would just, it would just cancel wholesale. So you have to be of the age to purchase. Same thing with cigarettes, I have the same thing set up for cigarettes, and tobacco products, and for the beer and wine as well. So it knows, check on that, on that purchase.
Okay. Now, number two, minors under age 21 are not allowed to be employed by this business. Number three, all alcoholic products to be sold from locations located closest to the pay point.
I have, I have my beer, I have a, I have a beer cooler in my Air location, five, I have five doors currently, and they're closest to the pay point. At nighttime, I can, 11 o'clock, or when the, when the time closes, the timeframe closes, I'm a 24-hour location, like I am in Littleton, I can actually lock all the doors, and I can show the lights, it darkens the whole room, darkens the whole cooler. And my wine is actually straight across, so I can see it, have a full view of it, outside cameras throughout the building.
Number four, security cameras to cover the area where alcoholic beverages are displayed and on the cashier.
Yes.
Number five, all alcoholic beverages are not accessible by the public during hours when alcohol is not for sale.
Correct.
Number six, no single, individual containers of beer, malt, or wine coolers to be sold, with the exception of large 750-milliliter bottles.
I'm not interested in singles, I'm interested in taking care of the customer that wants to take something home. I don't want any singles, that's something I've, I've never been in favor of.
Number seven, no external signs displays advertising alcoholic beverages. So those, but that's what Air imposed on them.
Yes, Joe?
Yeah, a couple of questions, Gary. How long have you been selling the liquor, or the beer and wine in Air?
Eight years.
Eight years? And no problems at all?
Never had a problem.
Okay. Now, what's your timetable for your renovations, building and getting everything all set?
I don't have a set date, I believe it's in the next month or two. I don't really know a set date yet, we're still trying to finalize plans with the architect, and then we're going to visit the town for the building permit. I've got all my necessary permits from the planning board and the health department, and that's the only one we're doing now, just finalizing the interior layout, elevations, ceiling plan, things like that. So I don't have a date yet, but it's supposed to be sometime in the winter or the spring, I don't know when. I'm hoping to get it done soon, because I like to be open for the summer months, and be ready for the 3M anniversary.
What percentage, you talked about five different, I guess you have five different containers of refrigerators, what percentage of all your refrigerated things would be for beer and wine?
Probably 20% would you say?
Thirteen.
Fourteen doors, and an open-air cooler, and a couple of freezers, those are the commonest. So I basically have four for beer, for, you know, certain vendors, and I have one for wine.
And what hours are you allowed to sell in Air?
Yeah, I was saying that I stipulated here, in front of you folks, my hours are what Commonwealth asked for, it's 8:00, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Sundays, 12:00 noon until 11:00 PM. And certain days, you can't buy a beer and wine, you can't buy it on Christmas Day, holidays, certain holidays, more of it. And the other thing, we don't go by your wristwatch, we don't go by your cellphone, we go by the pay point on the register, we don't go by anything on the wall, that's it. And my, my philosophy with my cashiers, and they understand this, is if someone comes in at quarter of 11:00, and they want to purchase a bottle of wine, and they want to get something like that, I always say to the cashier, I want it, I want it paid for, and I want it bagged, and I want it to go out the door way before the timeframe. If it's, if it's two minutes of, we're closed. I don't want to take a chance, we're not, we're not going near that timeframe, and we also don't sell till, if it's Sunday, and the big game's on, or a game's on, or something like that, we don't sell until 12:01, because I just want to make sure it's very clear in everyone's mind, these are my hours. So if someone comes in and says, hey, there's a, you know, there's a game, and something on, I want to make kind of a hurry, because you make a deception, we don't, it won't make sense for anyone. So 12:01, you can, you can use most shopping, or come back if you like, but that's, that's the rules. Another thing, if I could say, my, I have a very low turnover, and I have very good employee retention, and I very proud of my employees, they work hard, and like I said, they Card my own wife. And, you know, cashier, who's known my family for a very long time, I'm sorry, he's, you know, don't be sorry, you're doing your job, and I can enjoy that. And that's just what we do. And, you know, I think it's the right thing, I give him a lot of credit for saying, you know, let me see your ID, and he knows who we are. These are the, that's Gary's rule, that's what I have to do.
You have anything?
Yeah, a few things. The retention of the information, and you take the date of birth, how long does that retain, and where does it retain?
I believe it's seven years. It's on a, maybe you can say that better. It's through our nucleus system, it's our, it's our cash register, and we have scanning capability, everything you have is as barcodes. We scan all of our items, and it's stored inside of our nucleus system, it's called Nucleus, and it's a, it's a system that the cashier can sell their items, and it helps the cashier to, to total the, the items up, and it tells, tells the customer how much the product was, the items, and how much change had been given back. So there's, it's kind of a, very-
It's our registered journal, it's the registered tape, you know, it's, but it's an electronic version. It's at least three years, I'm not really sure how much further goes.
I thought it was a little longer, but I couldn't be wrong.
I'm not sure about the level of detail, if it saves it though, but I know we have it for at least three years. And the ID, security software, that also has a reporting function as well, associated with it.
So, you know, you're, you're in a very busy location, you know, you get a lot of people coming off 495. It's good to hear that you're not going to have, except anybody but Massachusetts, or the IDs that you are. How's your employees going to deal with some, a lot of traffic coming in and saying, "No, no." You're going to say a lot of "noes" at that location?
No, we haven't, we're into that, my employees are very professional, and they try to stand to see your frustration, this is what we do, this is, these are our policies, they're setting forth to protect us and protect you, and we're going to make sure you're doing things properly and responsibly. So sometimes we have to say, "No, we don't like it," but sometimes we have to do that. It's kind of, sometimes it's a hard decision, but I tell my cashiers, if you're not comfortable with an ID, simply say, "I'm sorry, I can't accept the ID, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with this ID." I've told them that, and I said, "I'll back you up, if there's a problem or there's a question, you say, 'I don't feel comfortable with this ID.'" I said, "Then I will back you up on that, because I don't want you to have a second guess, well, what should I do, when should I do it?" So I say, "If you make a decision, I'm going to back you up on that." That's what I've done, I've done it many times. So they know that they make a decision, I'm going to stand behind you on that. So the only exception to that, if I, if I knew the person personally, and they're a very good friend of mine, or they're, not even a friend, but they, I've known them for years, I know they're 40 years old or something, you know, they, this ID doesn't feel right or something, well, they're, you know, they're okay, I've never had to do that, but I said, that's probably the only exception I would make, but I don't like to do that, I like to just say, "This is what we do, you know what your responsibilities are, and that's what I want you to do, I want you to make sure you're responsible, and we're selling things in a proper way."
This is more for the board, you know, we have other locations in town that may be coming forward, I mean, my concern would be, we get all the other gas stations in town coming before us for more licenses. Right now, we have, there's four, five, and at 500 yards, you got Little Peach, Coleman Convenience, the Littleton Liquors and Donalins, right, four.
Oh, and then you got right up, right across town line, too, but that's not ours. Are they, are they in, are they in Littleton?
No, they're not Littleton.
No.
So I guess, you know, those are, those would be my concerns, how many more gas stations are going to be showing up, convenience stores, for us to have liquor licenses. You know, you're a busy, like I said, the busy location concerned me, and that was a real concern for me, but to hear your policy moving forward, and to have just the Massachusetts license, or the passport, military IDs, puts my mind at ease with that.
Do we have a limit on how many of these are?
Sure, yeah, there is, there's a quota, you've got, well, all of the, all alcohol package store licenses are issued, so we're at quota. You have three beer and wine package store licenses left, if you grant this one, you have two left.
Out of five?
Out of, out of five, for package stores.
And one other, I kind of like the, this is something that, you know, maybe we should take a hard look at, having these types of, I don't want to call it restrictions, but some guidelines that the town should be putting in place, not just for Mr. Archer, but any, any liquor license that we get out there, I think, you know, take a hard look at the locations, and if it's a general statement by the town, I think that's a great idea.
Some sort of general conditions for each?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a smart thing to do, I think.
Well, we could, we could implement that fairly easily on the renewal process.
Yeah. My feelings are, your local business, and, you know, you want to, you know, want to increase your services, I think I'm all in support of that, and I think based on the record that you have, and the report from Sergeant Patterson, I support it. You know, I want businesses to be able to thrive, and I know there's probably some other people who are going to be upset, because there's another competitor in town, but I don't see how we can give it to one and not the other, so I'm all for it, and wish you the best of luck.
All right. I'll move that the Board of Selectmen-
Got to close the hearing first?
Oh, yeah, there you go. Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, relative to the application of G.W. Archer, Inc., Gary W. Archer, Manager for Retail Package Store License for Wine Malt Beverages at Mobile Station Property 500 King Street, Littleton, Mass., for the sale of beer and wine, Monday through Sun, Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Sunday, noon to 11:00 PM, as follows. One, that the premises are or not detrimental to the educational or spiritual activities of the church located at 500 feet thereof, and detrimental, and, and if not detrimental, two, the said license is hereby approved with the issuance subject to further approval of A, B, C, C, and passing all local inspections.
And attachment A.
And attachment A. We're gonna, are we gonna adopt that?
Well, we are for this one, at least.
Okay.
We're gonna-
Right, was it attachment A or addendum A, what was it called?
Addendum A. Second.
Most have been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have one question, about the 21, about the people working. I have two children that are coming up at some point, and I have one boy that helps me, he's my son, he makes ice for me, and, and does things around the store, swoops the floors.
me, he's my son, he makes ice for me, and does things around the store, sweeps the floors, and does outside work, cleans pumps and things like that. Would you allow my own family, my son or daughter, under, you know, my supervision, or a manager's supervision, to be able to be on the premises? I mean, I give them a summer job, just my own personal...
So I'm not selling the liquor, yeah. I think we're talking about the cashier.
Yeah.
Well, he, he may be a cashier at some point, maybe 18 or 19 years old, would that be allowed? I mean, I don't allow...
Well, not this year, not, you better, if you want to do, if you want to be a cashier. I mean, it's in here, we talked about it, we read it, he said he would read. So yes, for this year, he cannot be a cashier.
Well, he's not, he's not yet of that.
But future years, if you want to, you want to talk about amending these.
Okay, great.
But I mean, you're not prohibited from being on the premises and doing, you know, labor like that. Get the kid working hard, teach him what it's like to work for them, right?
Right.
Well, you know he's not going to be selling liquor.
No, he's not.
Yeah, as long as, that's my opinion, everyone on board with that, you know.
I think there's still laws until the, maybe like that, too. Yeah, if there's ever an underage cashier, you always see an overage cashier come and make the sale, so.
All right. You got a motion to adjourn? Seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's adjourned. All right, thank you.